Hello. Let's get all the meeting orders. We'll start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of our country and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I get you. We don't fight. I do have things to add to the agenda. Underneath ordinances. Oh, I think. Underneath ordinances, we need to add the salary limits for 2020. Okay, thank you. Let me do roll call, please. Pam Doobie here. Robert Uribe.
Here.
John Ward is absent. Alex is absent. Rich Young.
Yeah.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix, I think he's absent. Police Chief Robert Sokowski. Park Board President Dolly Millick here. KPZA Matt is absent. Building Commissioner Steve Thomas is absent. Webmaster Dinah Dobree.
Present.
And Ray Dobree.
Here.
Let's see. Jeffrey Gunning, he's gonna be late. He and I have had troubles all day long with the digital era. And he had to dictate to me what he wanted changed. And I finally got off of them a quarter after six. He's gonna be late for sure. He's gonna be late. So he is going to be late.
Joan, just to zip. The agenda have to be turned in. At the bottom of the roll call, you have Drainage Board Attorneys.
No, it's, put a comma after Drainage Board. It goes to Attorney Gunning. Picky, picky, picky.
Well, why do you have to write?
How long have you been? Sorry, I didn't go to school as high as you did. I came from a poor family. Is the rest of it all right?
Uh, I don't know. I moved the minutes up though, so.
Okay.
I will.
I pass on that, good.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as printed.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Not quite quick. Yep. So we have three ayes and two abs. Okay, so I leave those two signed. Whoops, sorry.
Joan, I did have a question from the minutes. Remember at the end of the meeting last month, I had said I would get a hold of the.
Oh, you were right.
Have you heard from them?
No. No, and I didn't put that in the minutes, did I? Yeah, you did, didn't I?
You put it in the minutes that, you know, it was voted on that I would.
Right, okay.
And I did contact, the next day, he was, he said they'd already been talking about it. They wanted to go ahead with another contract for a year, pretty much the same. And he would get back to us.
Well, we have till the.
April.
April 1st, 31st, and March. That shouldn't present a problem. But there should have something in there about lease pickup if we went through a total new contract. Didn't the console enter something into the specifications if we did put it up for bid about lease pickup being a separate bid?
For our.
Dan?
Pardon?
For our, for Republic Services.
For anybody, that's when it goes out for bid, it goes to anybody.
Doing anything about.
Anybody that.
We talked about lease, but I don't remember.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and read the October additional vouchers. Nibsko. Electricity for the garage, $32.97. Electricity for streetlights, $32.56. Gas for the garage, $56.71. AT&amp;T for telephone, fax, $107.28. Doom and repair for the repairs to the new Holland tractor. $27704. Attorney Gunning for his third quarter retention of $1,500. LaPorte County Recorder, $25. Several, we have several lots that went into what they call the DNR Conservation Eastman. It will never be sold.
But they're not ours, right?
It goes in there as their title, I believe. I think that's, right. Because I have to record, it goes into the DNR land management area. It would be nice if we just put the whole thing in, you know, all the lots that we do have. Along the creek? But that's gonna take a lot to do because there are several different titles. And everything has to be titled the same. LaPorte County Building Department for inspections for third quarters, $700. For a total of $2,731.56. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I move that we accept the personal payable accounts for October.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need some signatures.
Is Attorney Gunning on the way? I think you already answered that, right?
He is on his way. Like I said, we didn't get off the phone until quarter after five because we had computer problems. I thought he didn't send me anything. Then I get a phone call. Late afternoon. And I checked my personal email, it wasn't in there. I checked spam, it wasn't in there. I don't know where it went. Where they all went, there's three of them missing. Bob? Do you get?
We got more bills.
Oh, sorry.
Did Rich sign that?
Yeah.
These are the next ones.
Show a copy for me?
Yeah.
Okay, now that you've got your copy, I'll read them. Michiana Shores, bond through Charlie Apartment for rental, $105. For wire protection, $3,386.33. Town of Long Beach for police protection, $4,597. Republic Services for refugee services, $3,667.20. Department of Waterworks, $9.49 for water for the garage. And $9.49 for Kincaid Park. Brenda Hackman traveled to the bank and post office, $31.32. Office Business Depot. And don't ask me why they separated it, but labels for our informational meeting for the DNR of that last meeting, we had $29.47. I'm sorry, that was for the informational. We sent out a little reminder for information, I think everybody got one. And that was the one, it was $29.47. For the grant meeting, it was $75.10 because we had the brochures that needed to be printed. And for aim, I have just ordered six webinars. When we get them, anybody that's on the console or even if the public wants to look at them. The console and I particularly need some of this information. That was $125. Comcast for a telephone and fax, $86.90. Thank you. For a grand total of $12,122.30.
I move that we accept the, or that we go ahead, okay? The November bills?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
These are gonna be easy minutes to do. Yeah. Did they vote? Yeah, everybody. Okay.
Same order, I hate to make a motion.
Thanks. Okay, while they are signing that, I'm going to send around the vouchers for the payroll taxes. This was for the September payroll. Indiana Department of Revenue for payroll taxes withheld $397.04. September for the local tax, which is for County, $107.10. Internal Revenue Service for Medicare from payroll, that's what was withheld, $173.90. Payroll for Social Security, $743.64. Employer, BICA, which is Social Security, $170, not Social Security, Medicare, $173.90. Federal tax withheld, $202.88. And the employer, Social Security, $743.64. For a grand total of $2,542.10.
One question, Joan.
Yeah.
On the October 8th meeting, September 30, 2019 payroll claims.
Payroll claims, that was the claims that we'd have to do to transfer. All the individual items, each person's name and what's been withheld.
All right.
And this is the taxes for what's been withheld and what the employer pays.
Thank you.
It's fun, isn't it?
So this is every three months, roughly?
Yeah, every three months. And the taxes are due the month after the payroll.
So roughly, we pay over $10,000 a year just for the taxes that goes into the few employees in the town, pretty much.
What do you mean the $10,000?
Four times this number.
True.
Every three months?
Yeah, every three months.
And what a city like Chicago.
Amazing. You know, there's, there's some things really when you think about it. Sometimes it's, they, that's why people are using part timers. They're using different services. Subcontractors, so they have captain.
Can I make a motion that we accept the September payroll?
Rich and Bob team.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, the next one, we have over $5,000. Oh, I forgot, can't even get that signed. While you're signing that, we have to transfer funds to cover the trucks and tractor repairs and regular maintenance, there's over $5,000. We can take it out of several different accounts. I don't know if you want to decide who you wanna, I'm not a count, but I mean appropriation. We have an excess amount of money in there for the roads. So we could transfer, and that's in three different funds. We have roads out of Cedar, out of the Cell Tower, and then there's. And the regular CCD which had started a few years back just to do. There's a grand total of $109,000. And I don't think we're gonna pay, I mean, we're gonna get all that done. That might maybe done.
How much is, it's over 5,000?
It's over 5,000. And what I can do is do what they call a transfer. And I could transfer between funds, but I need the console approval.
Well, since it's the trucks for the roads and coming out of the road funds, Alan's.
Well, it, well, well, I mean, this is all paving, I just read you. So you want me to take it out of one of these accounts?
Well, if we gotta pay it, we gotta pay it, ain't we?
Right, we do. But I'm saying, what, do you want a Cell Tower? You want a CCD fund? Probably not because that was dedicated to road paving unless that's been changed. Cedar, we could take some of the money out of Cedar. I don't know how much money is gonna be needed for.
How much is left in the Cell Tower? No, we had.
As the accountant said, if everything is used this year to next year, at the end of next year, we'll only have $23,000 left in the Cell Tower. Which doesn't give us much to spend, the Cell Tower. So if you want to save the Cell Tower, we could go to Cedar.
So what kind of motion you want, just to approve that we?
To transfer the, this repairs and maintenance. It's over $5,000. Transfer from the Cedar to the LRS.
Okay. So I move that we vote to transfer the funds from the Cedar.
Cedar, C-E-D-I-T.
Funds to cover the expenses of the truck.
So we vote that LRS.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I think that's all I have for right now. Okay. Okay. Bob, do you want to give us the police report?
In the month of October, 146 dispatch calls, 27 people conversation. Miles served was 4,012. Hours worked were 765, 21 hours overtime. 16 hours that was for training, 4 hours for court, one was for Halloween. Part time officers worked 60 hours, reserves worked 10. Michiana Shores was four traffic stops, one citation, two red warnings, one verbal warning. Four suspicious subjects were checked. One suspicious vehicle, one courtesy services. One ordinance filed, three ordinance filings were checked, two alarms were launched. On the report side, they had a very large juvenile drinking party. Had one of the Airbnb houses. They called and rented a house and 30 plus kids showed up to the store. We're waiting to hear from the homeowner about damage inside the property. Let them get it come home. Another information report for invasion of privacy. More was requested in prosecutor's office. One felony OWR.
Thank you.
Bob, first out of curiosity, with juvenile, would you have to call the parents or what do you do?
Well, they also got run when one officer got there, so.
The fleas are leaving the dog.
There's only one of us and 30 of them, so it was kinda hard to corral them all. But we're trying to go through the rental place to see who actually rented it and.
Well, we need to remember that because that's a perfect reason why we could try to make these people have to register to do it.
Not only register, but if they, if there's other rent parameters we could put on it from Attorney Gunning, so we may be able to.
As long as we're talking about the new Buffalo, just, I don't know if they passed it yet, but it's, it is an ordinance on the short term rentals. And it's very nice ordinance that Dinah brought it up, took it off the internet. But we weren't sure, I think it was just on first reading or something.
They've got big issues up there from office rentals. Long Beach has got an ordinance against 30 day rentals because their grandfather didn't, because they had a place wired in the lodging. They have a fire department report too.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if they were gonna do that.
457.37 hours were spent during the month. Were your firefighters either in calls for attention or training at home and away? Meetings at home and away in public relations. Meetings at Bowman Station on the 2nd. There was a work meeting in the building addition. On the 9th, we had a business meeting. 16th, working on the addition. The 23rd is post testing. The 30th, working on the addition. Pancake breakfast was a huge success. We were visiting nonstop that day, so. No special training this month. Meetings away, we had a debriefing and a call with New Buffalo Township where a semi driver was killed and burned up in the cab of the truck. Pretty nasty call, so we need to brief it up there for some of our members. Calls for service on the 5th, O'Grady Road with a fire alarm. Algonquin Trail in Dula Beach for a medical call. Miami Trail in Dula Beach for a medical call. Patchy Trail for a fire alarm. Wilson Road 994, Sissy Buffalo, the semi crash. O'Grady Road, another fire alarm, Redder Inn Drive, medical call. Manute Court, medical call. Roland and Chip off for wires now. That was kind of a weird call. The house that's at the corner there, the tree that came down from across the street, took the power line off of the weatherhead in the house and put it at a 45 degree angle. The live wires, they still had power in the house. Live wires were down in the street because I'd never seen it before without tripping up. It happened. Didn't it, Brett? Okay, so Michiana Shores, there was one fire call. Michiana Michigan, there was one fire call. Dula Beach, there was three. Mutual Lake, we had three fires, the one first was fire call. Special and also Fire Department is adding on to its primary fire station. There's an 11 by 37 addition for storage and also we're putting in a compressor to fill our air bottles in the station. There you go.
Thank you. How far along are you on your addition here?
Right, insulated. They're insulated Saturday, we're on. It's coming along.
Did Steve Thomas leave anything for you or? Nothing to me. Okay. Dolly, do you have anything for parts and replacements?
We have enough of meeting for the, for the year, we don't need again until March. And, or just working on the sign, I haven't heard from Tyler yet. And he said he'd do it, but I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Sign, he was gonna redo it for us. And maybe I'll see going right now.
The tree removal report, do you have anything, Rich, on that?
Not really. I did tell Nick that he asked to get this stuff done because it's in the budget for this year, and he said that shouldn't be a problem. But he, I don't know what happened down here on Altona. That he picked up all that debris from the tree. And I don't, I'm not sure Bob didn't know of it. So I, I don't know what happened there. I don't know how we're gonna handle that. And there is a ton on Iowa.
Yeah, there is.
That was a big.
That's a big tree.
And we're gonna have to hire, you know, put that out for bids, I would say. And.
Well, why don't we do it before the end of the year? Because there's money in there to do it. If we had three years and we've gotten very little done with it.
Weren't there 19 trees or something to be taken down?
No, we're talking about.
That was different. This is the tree that came down on the north side of the creek. It came, it hit the wires, right about? And then, I don't think Nick got to it for a day, right?
Yeah, but you had a bid.
Yeah.
For 19 trees.
No.
Right? And then, well, whatever it was, and all the trees weren't cut down in that bid?
Not yet.
And there's a question that some aren't even on our right of way?
Yeah.
Well, we covered that at the last meeting.
So why not trade him that tree? The one that's out of our right of way for the one he picked up down there and the other one?
It's a possibility. I think, I don't know, or it was, you finally checked that we're not on the right of way? Were they big ones?
Not really, no.
Or would that be a comparable, just cover?
Well, that's a big mess of Iowa.
Yeah, well, I don't mean that one. I mean what he did do. Altona. Is that what you meant? Or did you mean Iowa?
Yeah, just trading one of those other trees that he couldn't take for that one.
But we, well, getting back to one in Iowa, though, we do need to.
Cation, big equipment.
Put out the bids.
Okay. Do you want me to contact several tree services that do have the equipment? And you want, the tree is down all the way, right?
Yeah, it's been shoved off, but it just, it's like a wall of downed tree that, branches. It's just across from.
I've seen it.
Sheila's house, it's that very modern one. And then, is it Rallison on?
Right.
Or Vitasland? And then even next to it.
I know, I, Rich, I saw it. I went by there because, as you can read my notes, Carlson already complained about it. And obviously she said it's really bad, so I know where it is. So we need to get bids for the removal of those, right?
Right.
Just the ones on Iowa?
Well, I would say that area, just like that, there's others that have been down there.
Well, if I'm getting bids for this, why don't we get all those properties that need to be cleaned up, the side of the road?
Is that still gonna be covered with this year's money?
Depends on what the bid is. That big tree's probably gonna take a little.
Well, Bob, is there still where Terry lives on Oakland? Aren't there still a bunch of trees thrown off the side there, branches? Right at the end of Oakland?
Oakland and Brooklyn.
Brookside? So that's another area.
Do you have something? Yeah. Rich, we have one on Brooklyn now, too.
Yeah, there's one there too.
Does it sun dry?
Yes. And another thing I can do is transfer funds, just like I'm doing out of the paving. We put a lot of money into paving thinking that we may not get that grant. And I don't know how they're gonna pay with the cold weather.
It's gonna be here this week.
They're gonna pay, should be bid.
Yeah, if they're gonna be here this week, they're gonna pave so we get water between it so that we can get, repave them again in a short time.
I think this whole new group of trees should be bid out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about that.
Yeah, just want them to. Yeah, it's okay.
Turn it here.
It's okay. Very funny.
No, it's not. Okay. Yeah, Bob, do you want to tell us more about the community crossing grant?
Well, as soon as the paper gets out, I can confirm yourself agree.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm making for them.
Okay.
The other thing about the expenditures for the truck is copper where the salt sits on the truck is stainless steel, so that doesn't rust. End of last year, that chute where the salt comes out from the back of the truck, that's steel. That rusted away and blew out. So one of the bills for Calvary was to rebuild that chute because they don't make them anymore, so we had to custom build it. When Nick ran the truck back to the station or back to the garage, the brakes were off, several brake lines busted. He fixed one, took it for a test drive, and his test drive and another one ruined. So it was just rusting away from itself. So you know what my solution is for the costly repairs for that truck? That's not going to happen, so we're still seeing continued bills.
So you're saying that that five thousand that we already had is part of that?
That all quite, it's part of it. There's some other things in there too, because there's some things at the beginning of the year. Yeah. Okay, thanks. It might be easier just to see if we can bid out the snow removal because it's.
Well, why not just have to replace all the brake lines?
He did.
It's, it's better off that way than doing everything else.
We did.
Okay.
That's what the bill came through, that he had to replace the lines and he had to redo, he had to make some parts.
He had to actually build one of the cupboards that it goes into, which came over the parts store.
Yeah, except the parts he couldn't find, evidently he had to make some parts. But. Okay, Rich, you want to tell us about what came with the plan commission?
Well, actually, nothing because we didn't meet. We were scheduled to meet a week ago and it was selection night. And it took me a while, I guess, but I realized that, because Bob's on it, I'm on it, Alex was on it, all up for reelection, I figured they'd be out campaigning, you know, that, and then Dinah was our, is our secretary, so she was up for.
Salary.
So we didn't think we should meet and just have like four because this Coffee property issue is too important to be decided by three votes out of seven if four show up. So we did offer Mr. Coffee other dates to try to reschedule. And Dinah was doing this email or computer vote.
Well, email and phone calls are called, I believe.
And our lawyer won him there because it is, you know, he still hasn't got back to us about the issue of this grandfather idea that Mr. Coffee thinks should, you know, be in effect of his property. So, and then Mr. Coffee has a lawyer, so we just never did come up with another date. And then the snow, of course, is hit, so now we'll just meet at the next, the number third.
That's the last information I had, that you were canceling the meeting totally and going to.
Well, we were trying to reschedule.
This is for the property on Cohaton and Shadow.
Right on Shadow, yeah. And I believe, you know, part of what had gone on at a previous meeting was that when Mr. Coffee was going to have everything, he was going to turn it over to Steve Thomas. Am I right? And Steve was going to kind of look it over and make sure things, but we still had a vote in the plan commission. Well, I don't think Steve Thomas ever got all that stuff.
No, he didn't. It's sitting in my office. He was notified over ten days ago, maybe more than that, that we had any office. And Thomas has not picked it up. If you want it, you can have it.
I know.
You don't want it? Okay.
I mean, I'll take it because we got the meeting coming up, but Steve Thomas won it. I'll try to call him. But anyway, we did end up meeting or rescheduling, so. And it really is a big issue that I just did not think, for example, if four got, four of us had shown up at the meeting and then, you know, three out of four would be a majority.
Thank you. We have a lengthy meeting. This is going to be a lengthy meeting for you. I don't think it's going to be solved in a couple.
And we're still, like I said, waiting for Mr. Gunning to get back to us on a couple of things. So we didn't meet.
Okay. Ray, do you want to tell us about the BZA?
Well, the next BZA meeting is scheduled for this month, the twenty-first. But as of right now, as far as I know, and talking with Matt, no one is on the agenda.
Okay.
So Matt, Matt being the president, will make the call.
Okay. Great, thank you.
White Ditch?
White Ditch?
This morning, I walked White Ditch. In the section that, between El Porto and Oakdale, and the culvert on Oakdale, on our side that we are responsible, there's a big branch. Nothing to stop the flow of water, but from this big branch, the smaller branches are right above the water, so if we're going to have somebody coming in to take care of trees, I think.
Well, I already mentioned to Bob earlier.
Did you?
He should, just with the little truck, he might have to cut it a little bit, but it's not any thicker than.
Well, I tried moving it with the snow and already had three hernias, I didn't want to have four tomorrow. So I really couldn't move it. And in that part from Oakdale to the end of Michiana Shores, the beginning of Michiana City, there are a couple small branches, trees that we told, I couldn't attend the meeting, the drainage board meeting, but Dinah went there so she can explain what this place, but we notified the drainage board. Again, nothing to stop the flow of water, but there is some, basically three branches or so that are probably could become a little pain.
Okay.
Dinah?
I think I just, when I was at the meeting today, when they asked for a couple of comments, you know, they all looked at me, so some sit there going like, yes, I think I've got something. So just let them know and that's it. So they said they'll care.
All right, thanks. And since you're next on the list here, do you want to tell us about the webmaster?
Uh, nothing really to, you know, nothing new to announce. I mean, I had all the information up about, you know, meetings, of course, were always on about the elections they put up. You know, notice that everybody who's elected and, you know, maybe later on we'll put some more up about that, but, you know, otherwise, some of the works I've had, you know, please mind with regards to an interview with the fire chief and about how those services are rendered to us and responses are done, so. Because I had some people asking questions just out of curiosity. So I said, you know what, I'd be interested in knowing too, so I thought maybe that might be something interesting for us to find out.
I think so.
Put on the fire department's chair.
Sure, yeah. It's a good idea. Okay. Joan, I guess the next thing on the list is the job description. Yeah, we need another meeting. Okay. Dinah, do you have any suggestions for a meeting date in November or December? We need to get started on that.
I thought we talked about the summer fourth, Wednesday.
Yeah, we did decide, we did hold a meeting and we decided at the end of the meeting that the next meeting will be twelfth or at three P M.
You're right. Okay, Mr. Gunning's not here, so he can't tell us about the ordinance. No, but I can give you the one for the salary ordinance. Okay. And you could get first reading if you wished. Okay. On the salary ordinance, there's two things on, I mean, there's one thing on here. If we don't get a grant for next year underneath the CCG, then that five thousand dollars would not be used. But I put it in here just in case because all the information I have, we were not one of those, one of them that was ordered anything for CCG. Monica, Bob, do you have any further information on that? Why you run out of it?
At the end of January, you split for twenty-twenty grants or so.
So if you want to do first reading, I'll read this for you unless somebody else wants to read it.
This one.
This is a ordinance number two oh one nine oh eight, a continuing ordinance to authorize compensation rates and salaries for the town of Michiana Shores, Indiana for calendar year twenty twenty. I'm going to skip the whereas and send it down to the compensation rates. This was, these rates are based on the existing compensation rates and salaries for employees, officials, and servants of the town of Michiana Shores shall continue at the most recent, recently enacted budgeted amounts, levels, and rates for the year twenty twenty and beyond or until modified and amended or amended by official action under law. And these come from our twenty twenty budget and the rate. Consul president would get twenty-five hundred dollars. Consul members, two thousand dollars. Clerk treasurer, eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Clerk treasurer for overseeing the refuse, six hundred and thirty dollars. CCG grant administrator, that's the road administrator I was just talking about, five thousand dollars. Building commissioner, five thousand dollars. BZA chair, five hundred and fifty dollars. Road commissioner, five hundred and fifty dollars. Park and recreation chair, five hundred and fifty dollars. Plan commission chair, five hundred and fifty dollars. Plan commission secretary, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Road maintenance, twenty dollars an hour. Part-time office, six thousand dollars. Refuse clerk, twenty-five hundred dollars. And of course, this is our repeal provision. It repeals all ordinance prior. And I don't know why we always put an emergency and enact them in effect, cause that's in there. And it would be, this will be in full effect in January, starting January twenty twenty.
Okay, easy enough. I'm moved that we, first reading adopt this ordinance, which is to authorize compensation rates and salaries for the town of Michiana Shores for a calendar year two thousand. These numbers like the ones that are already in the budget.
Right, yeah, there's budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Can we do a second reading with only three?
It's going to be done in two readings. That's why we're doing it tonight. We can ask attorney, anyone who thinks we should do it. Is he coming tonight or? Huh? Like I said, I talked to him at four after six and, you know, I said the roads are too bad. And I can't show up in that time hotel. Okay.
Are they informed grants, is that too simple?
Yeah, the White Ditch, well, let's go back to the first page. The one for the White Ditch Stabilization Bank Base Two, that is, Christopher Burke was awarded the contract, and I discussed that last year, I mean, last year, last month. The one for the repair and corridor restoration, we had the final meeting on that and also we're just waiting for the final written report and digital from A E S. And on the repair and corridor restoration implementation, our pre-proposal was accepted. Now, the next step is to put the, to submit what they call a proposal. And then we can hopefully start on that. So we'll have two grants going at the same time. Senator, can I have five thousand dollars extra for being grant administrator?
Say that again?
I said, Senator, in good mood tonight, seems like everybody's in good mood. Can I have five thousand dollars for being a grant administrator?
I'll give five thousand.
And the rest of it is attorney Gunning, except for communications. Right. And I did get, as accessory from the D N R, evident by someone at that residence or associated with it, had applied to D N R about some instructions on the flood plain in that area. So we got that information in case you need it in the future. Was it just for that area down? Just for that, well, it shows the whole area. But it was, they pointed this out specifically, it's for the one that was thirty-nine and five. Oh, okay, yeah.
Joan, have you heard anything about, we all know about a fairly new house, they don't put stock there themselves, even though it's in Michigan.
Mm-hmm.
I had a complaint from somebody that lives over here on Oakdale on this side that he talked to workers down there, they were going to put more boulders in front of that house. And some of those boulders are already where our beach rights.
Right, they were going to put them there, were they?
That's what he said. And the workers were in that valley, talked to them, but, you know, this is second-hand information.
Well, I think what we need to do is notify the D E Q, what is going on, and Army Corps of Engineers, and let them know they're putting that on our beach area. If they want to take that beach area, then they better give us some other area.
Yeah.
They don't have any rights to that beach area.
Well, do we get our lawyer to write that?
That probably would be a good idea.
And you get many, send a copy to the town up here. And by the way, I heard yesterday, I don't know if you knew, Tim, did you hear anything, Bob, that he's going to move to Florida full-time, I heard? The president of the Michigan State, I didn't.
I don't, I haven't heard that.
I haven't heard that.
There was some new pictures today in the house.
Is it going in yet?
No, it's the stairs.
It's getting close.
They're on, yesterday I heard a group.
I think they had water in the lower level.
Did you? Wow. Well, the waves were supposedly thirteen feet high yesterday.
Last second.
I'm amazed the D E Q allowed anybody to build a house there with all the things that are.
That's the sort of stuff, like with me, when we tried to let, ask them if we could just make our beach stop a little bigger so we could actually.
We have a problem.
And it was a critical move, but I told them all that at that meeting. But yeah, we need to ask the lawyer then to send the letter. I would urge it, maybe try to call him if he's not even halfway here, but yeah. Tell him to go back home.
Yeah, this is a very, we've forgotten.
Yeah, we need to set this down in the record books.
And you didn't have very many objectionable people, so that's going to help.
And I still, I, as a council comment, you got to understand how we have two brand-new elected officials and they don't bother to come to the meeting. I know they don't have to, but if you want to get involved, you need to.
They should be. Somebody might be surprised if we don't have enough money to do all that.
I make a wish. We're just, well, we have had a couple of comments here, we got a few more things I think we've got to cover, but if that attorney is not halfway here or not, he should turn around. Boy, he only has to attend one meeting a month. You'd think he'd be on time. I used to say that all the time, Bob, but then, you know, when he is here, he talks forever and our meeting lasts longer, so. forever and our meeting lasts longer, so I think I became, I became less concerned that he wasn't, and he doesn't really need to be here with the, well, he does, but, you know, going over the bills and that.
Well, he needs to give us advice if something comes up that, you know, is not on the agenda or it just comes up in conversation, so he needs to guide us in the right direction. I hope.
Are all the political signs down, Bob?
Sure.
I think there, one of the Michigan City people, I think, the signs like the flag is the stop sign.
Anybody have any comments from the audience?
Any comments from the public?
Public comments?
Nope. Nope? Well...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.
Well, if the lawyer's right up the road here, we'll have to give this, you know...
Try and call.
Do we have all the council comments and all the other public comments?
Yeah.
What did he say, is he here?
He said we can go home after we close the meeting.
He's not on his way?
Oh, okay. He's turning around.
Darn it. They can steal another quarter.
Bob, I would, I, we have a month, but thank you for your four years of service.
I wanna thank everybody for letting me serve for four years. I really appreciated it. It was quite an experience.
Do you have a meeting?
One more meeting?
Yes, two more meetings. We have one in December and we have the end of the year meeting.
Yep.
Oh. You're not done yet, Ken?
Yeah, you're not off the hook yet. Was there any public comments? No?
No. Let him have a happy Thanksgiving and be careful.
I guess he's turning around. Don't eat too much.
Thank spring.
Yeah, he's turning around.
Thanks.